Welcome everyone to the four o'clock work session for August 19th, 2014 for the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners. Have a couple items to discuss today. If you all have any objections, since we have some guests here with us to help us on one of the items, we'll move the Bowling Green East Little League Indoor Batting Facility proposal up first, if that's alright, Mr. Fable.
Yes, no problem. Great.
Do you have any preface or do it right there?
As you know, we've been approached by the East Little League through Corey Hart to create a new indoor batting facility complex at Caryacus Park. Today is the first official vetting of that concept before the City Commission. It has been vetted to some degree from the Park Advisory Board, and I guess part of our purpose today is to figure out what that recommendation was and why they chose to approve it. That's about all I had in terms of preamble, so I don't know how you'd like to proceed.
Okay, I'll invite Dr. Lawless if you'd like to come up and make a brief presentation. We do have your, well, have your, their packet, so.
I think we've had an opportunity to review it and all, but if you'd like to hit the highlights for the people watching at home.
Okay, so, I know several here, but for those of you all that I've not had the opportunity to meet, I'm going to stand here.
Identify who you are.
Yes, my name is Jay Lawless. That's what I was going to give you a little bit of history here without boring you to tears. I did play baseball at East Little League in Bowling Green back in the early eighties and late seventies. I'm showing my age here. For those of you all that were at our Parks meeting last week, I also mentioned that my father was actually president of East Little League back in the eighties. So, my history with the city of Bowling Green and East Little League, and Caryacus for that matter, I knew former mayor Sparrow Caryacus as well as his family. So, I am a Bowling Green person. I've got kids that have played in the league and have aged out. I've got kids that are in the league currently, and I've coached teams over there and tried to help as much as I can, of course, with baseball in general. I also coach football. I've also coached basketball for the city and county, so I'm not just a baseball fanatic. I've done all three, and actually, when it came time for me to actually play sports in high school, I played a lot more football than anything else. Here I am today, though, to talk to you about something that is a very unique opportunity. I asked the Parks Advisory Board this question before I started it, and I'll pose this question to you all, just for you to think about. How many of us have served on a board from a volunteer standpoint to help children or just help the community? Many of us, of course, can raise both hands and maybe a foot or two. I have done that, not, of course, again, just baseball, but other things, whether it's junior achievement, or kids on the block, or, you know, other things. And what I bring to you today is a special opportunity for the children and a unique opportunity for the city of Bowling Green. Firstly, we have somebody that's not just promising to do something, we have someone that literally has money in hand, money appropriated, to do something for the kids at Caryacus. We also have another opportunity to use that same family to manage the building of the facility. It's not just, "I'm going to hand you money." I've got someone that actually builds buildings just like this in Bowling Green and other places, building some right now, I believe in Minnesota. So, we have someone in Corey's dad, Johnny, that can oversee the building from start to finish, and has done it before. It's just, you know, it's not his first rodeo. Thirdly, we have a very nice opportunity for the children to see that if you dream big, and if you do the right things, and manage yourself and go up the ladder like Corey has done, he was a player at Bowling Green East Little League at Caryacus in early to mid nineties, that you can give back. And not just give back in a little way, this is something that's, fair to say, out of the box, and so, there's always in every play, I heard somebody say this, actually, the president of Little League International, I saw it on television, that said, "Little League is unique in two ways. One, it is the biggest organization for kids and volunteers for youth sports in the world, not just in the nation, but in the world." So, that's a unique situation, because you've got a lot of kids, when they think of Little League, they think of probably youth sports, but baseball. The second thing that he said was, and I put this in my phone so that I could remember this for meetings that I'm going to have next year with my coaches and other people that are on the board, every play, every play is a teachable moment, every play. The special part that I would add to that is, of course, being a coach, it's easy for me to think of it from the other side as well, how do we as coaches, parents, and volunteers pick those things to use as teachable moments? And then, secondly, how do the kids respond to them is what makes it so special. So, this is an opportunity, again, in three ways, giving money, providing the man-hours to get this built, and then, a local kind of hero, somebody that's done something special that the kids look up to and that people in the community see as a great accomplishment by making it to the major leagues and being from Bowling Green and being a product of one of our little leagues, to give back. And then, how can we use this as an advantage, as another opportunity for our children here in Bowling Green to have more time doing something positive? Who is Corey Hart? If you look in your packet, you'll see who I'm talking about. He did play at East Little League. He played at Greenwood High School, worked his way up the ladder and played not only with the Milwaukee Brewers, but recently signed with the Seattle Mariners. I got a phone call from Mr. Hart, not Corey, but his dad, this spring, who's with us now, and it was actually through one of the coaches in the league. Chris Deglow called me, said, "You're not going to believe who I have here." Okay, you know, I'm seeing patients, I'm an orthodontist, I'm working on braces, think of dentistry and teeth, not the most glamorous thing in the world to do, but some of us like to do that kind of stuff. And so, I'm leaving that, and I go answer this phone call, and I show up at the park, and he tells me that he wants to do this. You can imagine my emotions and thinking about, gosh, my first year as president of the league. Wow, you know, literally. I mean, and so, after getting past the wow moment, talking to other people in the community about this project, realizing that it's not as easy as it seems at first glance, and I know that we've all been through those issues, if you look through the packet, I would be more than happy to, of course, answer any questions that you have, and have, of course, several people here from our board in different capacities. I apologize, I don't have one person here that should be here, but he's actually attending a funeral, and that's our accountant and treasurer, Charles Taylor, but I have other people here as well. But, you know, what a, what a special opportunity that is not just a five or 10-year thing. This is something that could and should serve the kids of Bowling Green, not just East Little League, but the kids of Bowling Green for many years to come. And of course, something that the city would own, if you've read the packet, you see that, something that Bowling Green Parks and Recreation, and I've had many discussions with Mr. Belcher and other people on his staff about how we can make this happen. I would love to answer questions from you. I appreciate the opportunity to be here, and I'll just answer questions.
Before we go to that, Brett, did you want to make a presentation before we open the floor for questions?
How about the, the chair?
Does Mr. Deed have a comment? He's a lawyer, y'all always have a comment, right?
I guess the only background I can offer would be that Mr., Dr. Lawless and East Little League approached us around May with the initial concept of this, this proposal, and I think it's developed a little bit more than that since then, and, well, in August, the first August, meeting with the Parks Advisory Board, that's when we brought to their attention about really when the proposal got into the more presentable phase, I suppose. So, I'm not sure I can add much more to the presentation outside of just some working knowledge since, since May.
Mr. Deed, Chair of the Parks Advisory Board.
Good afternoon, Melinda Hill and gentlemen of the City Commission. Thanks for allowing me to be here. I too played Little League baseball, but back before they had a BG East, back in the Rook Williams Day, I played for the Rotary Club Pirates back in the day. So, I understand the need for recreation for our kids as well, and this issue was presented to us, I think it was sent to us by you all, to review a complete proposal by the BG East, and it took us about, I'd say, a couple of hours to go through the entire meeting, and let everybody question, let everybody answer, let everybody present, and when we completed our review, we went around the room, and our vote was five to one to one, five for, one against, and one abstaining. And the person abstaining was a new member of the board and didn't feel particularly comfortable voting, I guess. In the proposal, we want you to know, anytime you have someone that wants to give something to you and not put strings on it, you need to really take a good look at it, and this proposal looks pretty nice for the kids of our city. There were two issues that the board dealt with and resolved, and two issues the board dealt with and did not resolve, and perhaps you need to take a look at. The two that we dealt with and resolved dealt with access to the property, and access would have at the time been just for the BG East Little League, and they changed their proposal, and now access is granted to BG East and West. So, all Little Leaguers, male, female, whatever be the case, are to be allowed access to it. And then, control over the batting facility was another issue. Who had control? The initial proposal was the BG East president, Dr. Lawless, would have complete control. Now, it's going to be with the Parks and Rec. Paul Correa was there, he said we'd be happy to control the scheduling of it, so that made it fair for everybody to have access to it, East and West. So, that, that was important. Now, the two issues that we don't know that we've got resolution on, that you all may have to wrestle with a little bit, are the construction facility is free, and what a great gift, my gosh, you shouldn't look a gift horse in the mouth. It's, it's a great opportunity for us to develop parks for our kids and for our citizens. But because this facility will require us, the city, to pay for its insurance for the building and its perpetual cost of utilities, that's using public money for a potentially limited purpose, a limited use group of people. Now, the utilities aren't going to be large, we're going to have one bathroom to be heated so it doesn't freeze, and the electric is going to be lights, there'll be no air conditioning, there are garage doors that open and close to let air go through, and they're going to operate under that premises, so the utility bill is not going to be large each month, but it's going to be our responsibility. And the city's going to be paying for that bill while a limited number of people will be able to use it, it won't be open to the public. But an analogy of what we do already is, we have a swimming pool, and there's utilities used for that, it's just for swimming. We have tennis just used for tennis, we have basketball just used for basketball. So, this baseball project seems to be a pretty good project for the kids to have access to a facility to play and practice during the incremental months. So, we felt like that issue could be resolved. And the last one is the actual location. It's right there where there are some garden plots, it's going to take up eight or 10, six or eight plots, or four plots, whatever be the number, where people that may be on low income will not be able to use those, but you can move those plots somewhere else in the park. So, it's not a total disaster, and you can also consider putting this facility behind the tennis courts. There's a big field over there, and it may be available as well. So, those are two issues we didn't come to grips with, but we did come to a five-one-to-one vote in favor of the project, and we think it's a good idea. But of course, you all are the ultimate governing authority, and we respect that totally. We're just here to make a recommendation to you, and that's basically it, and welcome to answer any questions you may have for me on behalf of the Parks Board.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Deed. Ms. Denning, do you have?
Any questions?
Yes, sir.
For me?
No, no.
Okay.
Dr. Lawless, would you come back to the mic, please?
Yes.
I think you called me one day last week about this project, and I expressed to you at that time that I had some concerns about it.
Yes, sir.
And I still do. When I was growing up at 509 Kentucky Street, just a few doors from the L and N train station, there was no Little League that I could play in. I didn't have no Little League to go to, whether it was East or West.
Sure.
My concern about this project is, and I'll ask a few questions and get you to respond to it, is a deep concern. It starts off with the fact of the utilization of a city park, public property, that should be accessible to all individuals, not just East Little League or West Little League. It further goes to the point of building a facility, technically, a private facility on a public park or in a public park, that is only going to be used exclusively for the East Little League and maybe the West Little League, let's say both. The keys and the locks of that facility is going to be controlled by the president of the East Little League to say who is going to go in and out of that facility. The park that the East Little League, or baseball diamond that the East Little League uses is already controlled pretty well, 100% by the East Little League. In other words, if softball team, First Baptist Church softball team wanted to use that field, they've got to go through the president of the East Little League, not Parks and Rec.
I wait till, I wait till you're down to respond to these points, but I-
I appreciate it, yes.
Yep, but you may have to repeat it, because I may not remember.
It'll be fine. You tell me what you want me to repeat, and I'll be glad to.
Thank you.
So, when I look at the total picture, I am seeing a public park that is being turned into a private entity that is only going to be available for those individuals associated with that private entity, regardless of who they are, what their names, that doesn't bother me. The point is, it's exclusive. It includes a limited few, but it excludes many. Now, let me ask some other questions.
May I have a response to some of what you said?
Yes, yes, go ahead.
Let's see, my first response is, "It's not exclusive." I'm sure, I know we have Jeremy Stevens here, who's also a president of West Little League, and by the way, we did not introduce West second at that meeting, that was in our original packet. I appreciate Mr. Deed making that information available, but the plan was initially to have West Little League involved with us from get-go. Secondly, it is not exclusive. I might ask Jeremy this as well, how many scholarships do you provide to West Little League for kids that are underprivileged that, to your point, cannot pay to be in the league? Fifteen to 20, and ours is at least 10, if not 20, per year, so we're not excluding anybody that wants to play baseball.
Twenty-five, in total, based on your numbers here roughly.
Depending on the year.
Okay, that's fine.
So, I'm not excluding anybody.
How many black kids are in the East Little League this year?
Number one, I don't look at people as black or white, so I don't have that number right in front of me, but we would enjoy more diversity, absolutely, no problem with it, and I understand your point, but I, to your point, I'm just saying, we don't, if somebody cannot play, and we had several kids, we had kids from Potter Children's Home this year, to speak to your point without getting specific about races, we did have some children that were a minority race situation, that, that were picked up by coaches and did not pay a nickel for a hat, jersey, equipment, or anything else that played in our league. And that's not just this year, that's every year, and we like it, that's, I mean, that's not something that we say, "Oh, gosh," it's, no, that's what Little League is, it's an opportunity to help children. It is the best way that I know to teach kids, and my kids aren't going to play in the major leagues, I'd love to think that they, they could do that, but the reason that I do youth sports, and I'm going to leave what we're doing right now, to go to Hobson Grove that you all provided for us, to go coach some 10-year-olds to play baseball, the reason I do that is to teach them not about turning a double play or tagging the guy in the right spot, of course, that's part of it, but the reason that we all do this is for the kids so that they understand life's lessons, whether you grew up downtown or out of town, and we have people from many different places, so, I don't, and we also take kids at East Little League that don't live in our boundaries.
Let, let me ask, put it this way, then, and let me ask it this way. You there every day when East Little League plays, how many black kids played last year on that diamond? Just look out on the field. Twelve black kids played this year?
Might be off, one or two to 12.
Something like that, maybe. I, I would, to give you a number, I would have to really-
Okay.
-go back and look, because I literally don't look at that way.
That's fine.
But I, Paul and I, as well as some other people in our league, we could sit down and, and list people, but I think Paul's probably right.
Okay.
It's probably, give or take, five, it's somewhere on the higher end of that, not lower than that, if there's more than 12.
Where, where do you recruit, take in?
I don't recruit, but we have a, a specific area that people can come and play in our league versus play in another league versus where you go to school to define what leagues you can play in. There's two opportunities to choose which league you play in.
That's-
But we, but we don't recruit, Jeremy and I, as well as other Little Leagues, have opportunities for kids to come sign up at schools mainly, in February or March.
That's my question. What schools? I understand, and correct me if I'm wrong, we're talking about Potter Grade, Briarwood, and Bowing Green Junior High, is that not the case? Play in the East Little League.
As far as where we get people to sign up?
Well, I'm just asking, where do the kids come from? They go to school somewhere.
Oh, oh, where do they come from? What schools do they go to?
Yeah.
Well, my kids go to McNeil, you know that, you have, I think, some kids that have gone there as well, grandchildren and whatnot.
Sure.
So, TC Cherry, McNeil, without naming names. We also have a principal from Parker Bennett, who's had kids that played in the last couple of year, actually, last year, that played at Bowling Green East Little League. We also have kids that go to county schools as well.
If we had a request, an entity out in the community came to us or to the Parks and Rec Board and said, "We would like to have our church's league play a game, or three games, we have some visitors coming in to our church, and we would like to have a competitive softball game, can we play out at Caryacus Park?" What would be the response?
Great question, because I asked that question to one of the people that works with Mr. Belcher today, and he informed me, just, or actually reminded me, that Bowling Green East Little League does not own that field, and that we provide a schedule, just as John and Julie and some of the other people that are here from the Parks Advisory Board heard from the same people, we provide a schedule very early, very consistently, as to the games and practice times and whatnot. So, to answer to your question, I don't make that decision, and Mr. Belcher should be able to tell you that, I don't decide whether you play at Caryacus at your specific time. We may have a game scheduled, but it is a city facility, just like this facility would be a city facility, and just like the batting cages that we have at East and West Little League, and just like the fields that we have at East and West Little League, you and I own those, the city of Bowling Green owns those. Jay, as president of Bowling Green East Little League, would not be able to tell you, Mr. Denning, that you and your friends, or whoever wants to use that facility cannot use it. That is inaccurate.
Well, let me ask it this way, then. Your schedule that you put out every year starts from a beginning date to an ending date, and the ending date, I would assume, and correct me if I'm wrong, is when cold weather sets in, so when does anyone else have an opportunity to play ball?
My ending date is when-
On that diamond.
Should I, should I let Mr. Belcher answer these questions?
I don't care who answers.
Our ending date is June 15th.
Is that right?
Yes, sir. It has to be, by Little League rules.
Yeah, I, I don't, I know nothing about Little League, nothing whatsoever.
Is that accurate?
How's that tournament like?
And we don't have tournaments there, so.
All-stars, but I would-
Well, let me, and I know I've taken up time that others may want to use theirs, but my concern, right here inside, has not been eliminated with this presentation. Regardless of what we call it, or how we are presenting it, it is still an exclusive field only for a few. That is my feelings today, that was my feelings before today, and I've been here a lot of years.
Yes, sir.
And you used to be real Caryacus, well, one of my best friends in the world. I used to pick walnuts up where the little picnic table is at, right there at Caryacus Park, big walnut tree used to be right there. Granddad used to take me out there and pick up walnuts. So, I know everything about that Caryacus Park, and I have concern that we up here should not in any kind of way give out any interpretation to the general public out there that we're selling off parts of our park to an exclusive group to operate those facilities. I'm talking about batting cages, and I'm talking about diamonds. Now, whether you interpret it as that not being the case, it is interpreted by others in the community that it is already that case. Now, I'm telling you, not as a city commissioner sitting up here, but as an individual that has lived in this community all of his adult life, except for two years, that is already the mindset of many in this community.
That's all I got to say, ma'am. Is that what you have, question?
Go on with some, well, I would, if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to hear from the West Little League president, his thoughts.
Sure, absolutely. Absolutely, thank you.
And before you sit down, I would like to say, when we first received this presentation or proposal from you all, you all have come a long way.
Thank you.
And I appreciate you all trying to work with us and get this where we all can do what's best for Bowling Green, so thank you.
Yes, ma'am, and I appreciate that fact, too, and I respect the, some people have asked me, you know, what's the holdup, what's the, we respect the process that any decision that is made in the city of Bowling Green must go through, because it's not for one group, it is for the entire community, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Jeremy?
Jeremy Stevens, Bowling Green West Little League. I honestly just learned about the facility, I, I found out the way most Bowling Green did on WBKO, and I, at the time, I wasn't aware that we would be involved with it, and since then, Jay has spoken with me about, about that we would, we would have access to it. I didn't see the promote, the proposal that you have until last night, so I haven't had a real, good chance to look it over and examine it. I've emailed it to my board, excuse me. The only, the only real concerns that my board has with the project is that it would be controlled by city parks and that it would take from city park funds, and I- And I, my league's the smallest league in Warren County, and we, we have roughly 53 kids, mainly probably about 30% minority. And most of my kids live in the League Point area. And so, we don't, we have a lot of, we have a higher rate of scholarship kids that we have to, we don't receive any money to fund our program. So, we depend on, on, on businesses and individuals to donate to our scholarship fund to cover those children. But, I mean, I think it would be a great facility for, for the area if it did go through, and I would be honored to be able to use it. I, I, other than that, I don't, I'm not really informed about the, I came for, more for an information than to give a presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from Mr. Stevens?
No.
Thank you.
Let's go.
And I don't know who I need to address this to. Maybe, maybe Brent. Do we have a current demand for field space that's not being met?
For Little League demand?
For, well, like?
We have four Little League fields, and presently, that demand is being met, namely because, actually, this past year, in the past few years, East Little League has, their numbers have grown, so they've started using Pettigo Park on some occasions for practicing as such. And then Hobson Grove? And Hobson Grove.
I think my question is more in line with, do we have people coming and saying, "We want to use that field," and it not being available for them to use?
Not in my two years in this position, I have not. We have 11 baseball, or 11 fields in our disposal for our Parks Department. So, at this point, we've been able to facilitate ever, every request for usage, whether it's softball or, or fast pitch softball, or, I should say, slow pitch softball, fast pitch softball, or, I'm not aware of any baseball rentals that have had to take over multiple fields.
Okay. And I know about the East and the West, and I know North and South are basically county teams. Are any kids in Little League in North and South city residents?
Yes. The, the boundaries for Little Leagues do not correspond to city, city boundaries. And then also keep in mind, Dr. Lawless did mention one valuable thing. There's two ways to play, just determine which Little League you're, you play in. It's first is your home address, and second is the school. Yeah, where the school is. So, you know, that, that could determine where you play. You have two options. A child may go elementary school at Dishman Guinness, play in West Little League, goes to Bowling Green Junior High, could have the opportunity to play in East Little League. Now, and so, I guess, corresponding with Warren, North and South, if I'm not mistaken, the boundary is somewhere around Scosset Road, Greenwood High School, in that range. And then on North, it's just north of the river, it's really just a bridge, is all of North from that point on.
It's the Bayous area.
Yeah. The North takes off from Barren River on, which is obviously part of that, is the city.
But decides those boundaries, if you don't mind me?
That is the district administrator, right? Is that the term? District administrator, who determines the boundaries? District administrator along with the presidents. But if I'm not mistaken, those boundaries have not, they've remained pretty constant for a number of years.
And, and kind of what I saw, that the map, the East Little League is not just, it doesn't stop the city limits either. It goes all the way to county line.
That's right. It goes all the way to Cemetery Road, if I'm not mistaken.
So, they all go to the county line, whichever direction it goes?
Pretty much, yeah. It looks like, yeah. Can't speak of how they got divided, but that's what I gather as well.
Okay.
And then, if I may say, I'm pretty, I think it's fair to say, the third option is just like with school districts. I think some, some children may play out of district, I guess. I don't think that's going to be unconscionable that some children probably play out of district within the four districts, or within the four Little Leagues.
Jay, this is probably for you.
I have one thing to what Mr. Belcher said. Unfortunately, some of the people on his staff that actually do the scheduling would, I think, agree with, or I know they would agree with what I'm saying here as far as having enough fields. If you consider having enough fields, not being able to have practices once the season starts... Okay, we've got enough fields. Unless we go to Hobson or other fields that make it very difficult, we've talked about families and other situations. I have three children, all playing Little League baseball at one point at the same time. Very difficult to get back and forth between Hobson and Caryacus if there's a 15-minute window or at the same time. So, our problem, to give you just a little bit more history, is that we have 17 teams, or 18 teams some years. We have two fields. So, as I did this year in making my schedule, I went to some of the people with Ms., with Brent's, go ahead with his grace, and said, "Hey, can we practice somewhere else?" Because we've not used those other fields that I'm aware of. And I've been at, at Bowling Green East with my oldest son, who, again, has aged out for going on my sixth year. And so, we've never had to do that before. But I said to myself, you know, what is going to be my legacy? Just like I know what you all consider as doing what you do and help to make these decisions for the community. My legacy, I'm trying to get more practice space for the kids so that instead of just practicing like crazy for two or three weeks and then just playing games, I would like for them to be able to hone their skill, just like we all do and what we do every day, you know, for a living. The same thing with baseball. With this, as I was talking this afternoon to someone, we could have three teams in that facility at the same time. Some of the questions last time were, really, is Bowling Green West really going to get some time in there? Come on, is that a wink and we kind of nod, you know, elbow each other? Yeah, it's going to happen. No. We've got five to nine. The park closes, Brent, at what time? 11 o'clock, but we're not going to have our kids out till 11 o'clock. We don't play any innings after 10 o'clock. So, if somebody's a straggler and they've got a few minutes, that they're teaching one child something, the latest we could be there would be 10 o'clock. But from five to nine, potentially, is possible open times that your softball team, Mr. Denning, or anybody else that has a league within our city for baseball could use this facility, okay? We don't have adult baseball leagues, I'm aware of that. But we're not building this for the golf team, we're not building this for the swimmers or whatnot. This is an area that's already on our, in our area that we, we play baseball, and we need some more space so that the kids could practice once the season gets started. It's very difficult to, to learn all this just while you're playing. For those of you all that play anything, you know that. So, I just, I wanted to address that point. You're exactly right in that it's not been a big concern, but lately, as we get bigger, it's becoming more of a concern. And with 17 or 18 teams, we would greatly appreciate more practice space so that once the season started, once the season starts, we're not having so much trouble with practice times. I'm not saying we don't have any practice times, but it's, as Paul or anybody else that coaches there will tell you, it's difficult to get that. I'm sorry it's a long answer, but your question, Mr. Williams?
Well, we talked about the facility itself and the fact that it wouldn't be air-conditioned. Flip that around, is it going to be heated? You say it's the one bathroom, but I'm going, I'm going to go back to a former time when I was very involved with baseball, when you have the opportunity to have an indoor facility and you can work with your pitchers and catchers and even hitting facilities during inclement weather months. That makes sense to try to do that if you want to be competitive.
It does.
So, January, February, you plan any use of this facility? And if so, how are you going to heat it?
Do you want to answer that question?
Do you want to have two hanging heaters?
This is, this is Mr. Hart. I don't know if you want to come to the microphone or you want to just tell him. But he's made these exact facilities for other purposes and for baseball. So, I'm going to let him answer that for you.
It'll be two hanging heaters that'll hang from each end of the facility. That'll only, you, it'll be turned down pilot lamp when there's not nobody in, and it'll provide enough heat with body heat and everything else, and the building's well insulated and got a double lining in it, that, that the cost will be minimal. But that's how it's going to be heated. And we're not going to put heat, we're not going to put cooling in it because that would be really expensive. And we can ventilate it by putting an intake and an outtake fan at each end of the building and have garage doors on the sides, and that'll keep it at a, at a comfortable temperature inside during the warmer months so that we won't be burning up any time of electricity for, or gas for HPAC.
So, have we got an estimate on how much this is going to cost as far as utility costs?
No, certainly haven't. Haven't got that far.
But the city would be responsible for that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Lawless, probably for you. If not, you can point somebody else out.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, sir.
If this question is not for you to answer, you will point somebody else out.
Okay.
What about, Rick asked a question that, that I had also, about those kids that live in the city and play in the North or play in the South?
That play out of, that play out of district?
Now, they just play in the North or South that are going to be excluded from this facility, right? But they live in the city. Is that a fair statement?
No, that is not a fair statement. And actually, I just, I spoke with some of the people on our board before we got in here. We're mentioning West Little League and East Little League. Of course, the whole reason this is coming up because someone that's a former player in our Little League is not, you know, we're not trying to exclude people. If you have a relationship with the Little Leagues in Warren County, I would not exclude people from a Little League use of the facility. I've also spoken with someone that had to leave, I guess, who has a, who's also on the Parks Board, Julie Huntsman, about travel teams. I'm not excluding those people from the facility. And to your point, Rick, the, the, we could potentially charge a fee to help with the maintenance of these facilities. And I would, of course, not be first on the list to determine what that fee should be. I would leave that respectfully up to you all because you are going to be the ultimate decision-makers on this project.
I don't have an issue with it being baseball only. I don't, I don't think. We had a discussion with, with someone about, obviously soccer is normally for soccer.
Right.
Not all the time, but mostly, and swimming and all that.
Sure.
Where I'm still having problems with it is exclusion again. And, and you've answered the, the question about other, I don't know how, I don't know how to be done logistically. If you live in the city and you play in one of the other leagues, you get to use it somehow or somehow. I don't understand that. But that being what, being what it is.
I can speak to that if you'd like me to. I talked to someone today. Again, what we would do is provide a schedule of what we would like to have. And again, as Brent would tell you, Caryacus Park is not, I mean, yes, it's our park. I consider it our home. We love it. It is a great location. But those fields are everyone's fields. To their credit, the people at Bowling Green Parks and Recreation do a fabulous job keeping up the fields and also making sure that we do not have people... Who would those people be? I was given the analogy today, I would let a BMX team go out there with a motorcycle group and ride around on the, on the field. So, unfortunately, I agree with your opinion in that to the average observer, most people think that those are areas that are used for baseball. It's good and bad. But the fact that people might consider it only Little League East baseball, that's just simply not the case. And I, I would apologize for it. I'm sorry, I don't know how that's happened. This is, again, my first year being president, but I've been involved with the league for a very long time. And other people being involved with the facility, what we would do, just like the batting cages and just like the fields, we would give them our schedule. And it may not always work. It doesn't. They've said no before to the things that we've asked for. It doesn't happen very long, or I'm sorry, very often. But at the end of the day, you are going to own this facility. You are going to own this facility and on down the line. So, Bowling Green Parks and Rec, as their job, will manage the facility. I mean, that's just the way it is. It's the way it is at Caryacus right now with the other things that we have. How will they make those decisions? That's not for me to say because I don't work there. I work for the kids in the league and the families that I serve at Caryacus.
And I under, I understand that. I appreciate you explaining that. But this has changed, and what Melinda said about it, it has changed somewhat. Or it is my misinformation. Initially, it was going to be just strictly a BG East. Now, it's BG East and West. And now, it's BG East, BG West, North and South, right?
No. A minute ago, I said it started out as being BG East and BG West. We've not started out with the idea that it was going to be BG East at all, partially because we knew that there are kids in the city of Bowling Green that would benefit from it. So, we've not expanded from BG East to BG West as far as anything that we have presented. And I apologize that somehow it's...
Oh, that, that happens all the time to us, or maybe just me, but it happens all the time to us when projects come before us.
But I don't, but, but because of your point, I can say that here today, I don't think you can keep other kids from the city of Bowling Green from using it. But, again, I'm not going to make the kinds of decisions that would, that would keep that from happening.
Let me, and I'm, I'm really trying to think through all this. Let's say that, what about those kids that aren't involved in sports and they just want recreational place to hit a ball?
Same question came up at Parks Advisory Board. And I do want to speak to a point and maybe even turn the podium over just a second to Mr. Brett Reynolds here, who is our player agent on the board, who deals with lots of different things, but is also attorney here in Bowling Green. But as far as other kids that want to do it, just like when they want to rent the gazebo or anything else at Caryacus, you call Pete or Jared or Paul Correa, and you handle it that way.
Brent, how, how's that overseen if we've got some people in there not with a representative from one of the Little Leagues and you just have kids that want to go out with dad and hit a ball?
At Caryacus Park, presently, we have two fields, same at West Little League. Both locations have what we call a major field and a minor field. The major field is locked, the minor field is not at both locations. The minor field is not locked for the entire purpose of what you just mentioned, that it basically allows for anybody in the public to go out and use at their disposal, obviously when there's not a game going on. But it is open for free play access. In addition, the parks, both parks themselves have what I would call green space available for anybody to, you know, once again, play or at least do a baseball-related activity in the park.
Girls can play in Little League, obviously. We're seeing, we, I was going to say, we hadn't even talked about the gender issue, but I'm aware, obviously, that girls can, can play in Little League if they want to, and could also go in there and hit a ball if they wanted to with what you're telling me. Sure, yeah, if you don't mind.
Thanks, it's hard to use.
Yeah, I don't have anything specific. I guess it kind of goes back to the first thing that Mr. Deeb said, and then kind of, I don't know that I can alleviate your concerns. My name is Brett Reynolds. I'm an attorney here in town. I grew up playing in the West Little League and have a very soft spot in my heart for the West Little League. I don't live in the West Little League, and this is where I live a half a mile from the East Little League, so that's where we play. But anyway, what Mr. Deeb said, and I hope I can alleviate some of your concerns, Mr. Denning, I don't know that I can, but I'll try. But as far as the use goes, and I think you touched on it, too, it's, it is exclusive to baseball, but then again, you know, anytime you build something sports-related, it is kind of designated for that particular use. And right now, as an exclusive use, these are garden plots. And I think four people or four families have use, whereas we're going to open that use up almost tenfold to these kids and their families because, whereas we take four garden plots and convert it into a use facility for 250, 300 kids or more, whomever else is coming from the city. So, I think that, that we are increasing the use of that portion of the, of the property. Now, while it will be exclusive to a sport, it's not exclusive, certainly not racially exclusive, it's certainly not any people-exclusive, it's exclusive to space, need, and scheduling. And right now, East Little League has the field from March, although it's still dark in March at, when we get out of school and can do things, through the middle of June, sometimes into July if All-Stars are involved, which is every few years, not that often. Beyond that, we turn our keys back into the city, and we don't have control over the Major League field anymore. We don't have control over the batting cages anymore. We, you know, we cede our control for that period of time back to the city. So, to the extent... for that period of time back to the city. So to the extent that we do control it, it's simply because that's where the East Little League is seated. We don't, we are at the, more than anything, we are at the discretion of the city by their scheduling and, and when we can use the fields. And then we just dole it out to the people as we can during, during our allotted times. So I don't know if that helps any, but.
So if you were going to have a draft, if there were going to be a request for this facility, the batting cages, would it mirror, it wouldn't mirror what the fields are though because you're going to be using it in winter, right? So is there a way that you can provide a draft of what your contemplating use of the facility would be?
Sure. I mean, we could kind of template off the way we do.
You see what I mean? So that we would know how much time would be available outside of what you all are proposing.
We do. And, and, you know, we could kind of template it off the way we have to dole out our practice fields over there because we have a lot of need for space and very limited space as far as fields go for these kids. So we dole out hour, hour and a half here and there to the kids every day of the week, as much as we possibly can, and even on the weekends. So we could take that and, you know, extrapolate it out and show, you know, at, beyond that, after June and July, kids are going on vacation and then it would be up to the city to determine who could use it. And if that, if the South Little League were to use it for something, that would be them calling the city to schedule it, not, not the East Little League.
Yeah. And that's to my point, too. And I'm rather thick-headed sometimes. I want to make sure I'm clear on this. But Kevin, I'll lose this if I don't ask it now. If the, if the kid that, boy, girl, get that in there, wants to use this facility, they're not associated with any of the leagues, they just want to go hit some balls indoor during December, they can call Parks and Rec and schedule that and do that. Now, who would be there? I guess we would have to have someone available from the city, which, do we hire someone extra? How do we do that, Brent?
Thank you. I would like for, of course, both of us to talk to this. But from what I understand from today, from talking to the people that schedule those things on Brent's staff, they do this already. They did not feel that we would have to hire anyone else, nor would it create any additional work hours. This is their boss, so I'll let him answer. But that's the, that's the, I asked that question. I said, do we need to hire somebody? And they said, we do this all the time. This is what we do. This is a very positive project. I see no reason why we would get another entity or even another person involved.
The only revision I'd say to that would be, they would call us for, for their request of when they want to use it because it would be a, we would have to have staff available to, I guess, supervise the activity in the facility while they were using it. So that would be additional hours. Do we have those hours in department? I would, fair to say that, you know, I don't necessarily believe we would need additional staff for that at this point. But I guess it depends on how often we get those rentals and those sort of things. But if the public was using it, we'd have to have a staff present at the facility.
But there would be a process, and you believe that you can handle that process?
The rental process would not be anything foreign to us whatsoever.
Now, rental, rental, and, excuse me, I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
Isaac, go ahead.
For rental, if, if, again, if I had that child and we want to go in there and hit the ball in December, now, can I just, am I, is the idea that we would just go do that? It would be open, there would be a park staff there, we hit the ball for 30 minutes? Or do I have to pay something?
I don't, I don't believe that would be conducive to, to an efficient operation unless demand showed such. My initial idea would be that it would be a call and demand type of thing.
Could you have open hours, saying that it's open from five to seven?
As development of the facility comes, to be honest, that'd be something we'd have to develop as time goes, I believe, because the demand would speak for the opening hours.
Was that the first time I thought about that? And it would maybe, maybe something.
It's not something that we would say would not be possible, it's just something that we would have to really see what demand would have from the public. If demand warranted, then sure, we'd do that.
I have something else on another area, but not on exclus, being exclusive and that. But I have something else.
Go ahead. You got the floor.
I think Kevin's burning to say something, which would.
Dr. Wallace, can I speak to you, please?
My questions are not about the use of the fields. It's about use of the facility. I need you to help me understand. Are we being asked, i.e. Brent, to allocate this facility on a first-come, first-served, no matter who it is? If I call, Brent calls, you call, whoever calls first gets to use it? Is that the intent of East Little League?
Yes.
So if a girls softball team called or special needs team, we have special pops that have teams. If, if they're in the city and it's not East Little League, if they call first, East Little League has to wait?
I'll bring up, I'll give you an example. It's raining outside. I can't practice. To answer your question, yes. But is, to answer your question, yes, yes. But to give you an example, it's raining outside, somebody's rented that facility. I can't go in there. As far as BG East or BG West or whoever you're talking about.
There's a huge difference between first come and first served to help the entire community. Or the other idea is East Little League and now West Little League determine when they get a priority use of that facility. And whatever's left, then Brent allocates it on a first-come, first-served. So there's a huge difference. And the expectation, I'm confused as to the expectation. Is it first come, community-wide, and the only governor on that is, you have to be in the city of Bowling Green, and Brent determines who asks first? And it could maybe not be your group?
Right.
Or are you guys wanting it first and you're expecting to be a little bit of time left and thus Brent can allocate that on a first-come, first-served basis? What was the intent? Because the advisory committee, our advisory committee didn't answer that. I haven't heard that here today. So.
Do you want me to speak to that or do you want to speak to that? Okay. Okay. The answer to that question is twofold. One, Corey played at Bowling Green East Little League. Corey Hart played at Caryacus. He is giving back in two ways. But the first thing he thought of was East Little League. So considering that I'm here today to present this to you and that I'm luckily associated with something that he wants to give back to, and that's why he wants it to be at Caryacus, he played there, I would be very remissful to leave this chamber, nor you leave this chamber, and think that for an instant, that we would not be given some priority.
Okay.
During baseball season, for sure. And as my wife said, you know, be careful because you're signing up for some more work, you know, you know, your day job's getting smaller and smaller. But we are here to do this today. And we are not excluding race, gender, anything like that. So I would be very remissful for you to have any inclination that we do not desire to have some priority. Now, how much priority are we talking about? Maybe we need to come up with a, a plan as to, in January, we're going to use it for a clinic on two Sundays. And in the past, we have gone to private entities to pay those people to be able to use those facilities. Could we use that money to help offset the costs of heating, not cooling, but heating and some water for bathroom purposes? Absolutely. That, that would be the first place that I would suggest that we put that money.
Okay. So I just want to make sure I understand and board understands. East Little League is asking for special courtesy, but it expects that there'll be enough use, I mean, availability for other groups who maybe want to schedule that.
Yes, sir.
It is your intent or intend, East Little League and West Little League, to carve out first priority for a certain period of time, whether that be for the season or after the season. But after that, Brent and the Park and Rec Department is free to allocate it as they wish. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I have one more. We have four people who have a leasehold for a garden. They essentially said that we gave them permission until November 15th to use that parcel of land. Are we at liberty to say they no longer have that lease? And can we force them to take a payout from, from Mr. Hart or from Little League to start building on that property?
I'd be hard pressed to tell them we can make them leave because they do have agreement through this season. Obviously, I think if, if this does happen, I think they can certainly be made whole sufficiently enough that I think most of them would probably voluntarily agree to go. I don't think we can make them leave until the end of the season.
I would not want to do that to anybody. I would think that, given the magnitude of the project and that hopefully we can come together to provide something that they would agree to without going through anything like that.
As a final point, I saw Corey Hart hit a dinger at PNC Park a couple of years back. So I was rooting for the Pirates, but he hit a dinger that night.
Dinger's been called.
Dinger's been called. Thank you, Mayor.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure where, one thing, and I'm sure Bruce will probably sum this up, but, you know, someone, and you mentioned in your opening remarks about someone wanting to give, John mentioned in his opening remarks, gift to the city. And Corey wanting to do this is fantastic. So I don't want that to be, be lost anywhere. But one, but again, you're all's responsibility, it seems, is to do what's best for, for what you all think for the leagues, for the kids. And that's ours, plus what we think is best for the city and all the kids. So just to say that, that he's wanting to give something is great. And I, too, wouldn't want to look a gift horse in the mouth most of the time. But we have to have these questions answered upfront so that we don't get in a mess like we've been in a mess in a couple of other things, that we get into something and, well, we're not sure what that meant. Or is this, can they really do that, that type of thing? My next question has to do with actually the building of the facility. And Gene, you might be able to address this. Mr. Hart is, if I understand everything right, has volunteered his services. What issues are there? Is our public works involved in the oversight of this? And I'm sure he'll build a, just one terrific building. I'm not insinuating that. However, the city has certain responsibility to make sure that we have, and I know through the permit process and all that. That being said, what issues do we have with bidding? What issues do we have with any of those issues? And can someone volunteer to be, to build without going out with an RFP?
Well, I think, like a lot of stuff here today, I think we're still trying to work out all the, all the details. The way I understand this right now, I was almost under the impression that the East Little League would donate this building, build the building, and then once it's completed, basically donate it to the city with them doing the construction, with them doing the, you know, everything else involved with that. Of course, with Parks, not only Public Works, but with Parks and Rec have to oversee that as well, too, yes. I would certainly expect to have our staff out there overseeing the work to make sure it complies, including Brent, the other Brants, our building permit people. There'll be building permits that will have to be gotten, so that will be part of the process. So I see two or three C departments out there overseeing it. But as we understand this right now, we will not go through a bidding process because, the way I understand it, somebody could correct me if I'm wrong, but almost this will be an East Little League construction. And once it's completed, it'd be donated to the city.
Alex, do you want to speak to that?
Just speaking to not going through, it would be built by us and given back to the city instead of going through prevailing?
Yeah, I think this, I mean, Alex, not Mark, probably more of a Charles Taylor question on the counting side. But I think, quick, if I'm wrong, I think the money would flow from Corey into the nonprofit at Bowling Green East and then paying Mr. Hart for the construction of it. So Mr. Hart would be constructed, will be a certified contractor in the city of Bowling Green. All permitting and everything take place with Johnny being the general, general contractor and subs underneath that. You know, we've worked on some renderings and so forth. I think you may have those in your packet. You know, I think there would be obviously an approval process for the exterior that whether we're working with City Commission directly or the Parks Department or something that, you know, would be agreed upon.
What size of project is this? I've heard two or three different figures. What size of project, money-wise?
That's a question. As far as the total dollar amount, I know we've been working on a number of donations that would go into this. So, you know, there's a.
It'll probably cost that around 300. It'll probably play close to a half million.
Correct.
This is just a follow-up, and I think part of it may have been answered. But, you know, we talked about somebody just wanting to take their child out there and use the facility to go in and hit a, hit a ball or two. Obviously, to me, there's going to have to be some operational guidelines set for the facility because not just anybody would be able to go into the facility, take their child in there and know how to use the equipment properly. We've got some liability issues, so we would want to make sure that, that the city is taken care of on that and that we had enough oversight with our Parks Department that they would establish appropriate operational rules. And I just want to make sure that's done.
The deal with the individual, like if you want to take your son and you want to go in there and you want to work with him, that's kind of like taking business away from Diamond, Thoroughbred and Total Fitness. If you're giving a kid a one-on-one, then that's basically what you're doing. If you put a team together and have any of the Little League teams from West or East come in, then it's more of a controlled environment. You understand what I'm saying? You're not, you're bettering your team. And even if you're, if you're trying to, and I'm not trying to say just because Paul, but, but Paul, he's a, you know, he's a pitcher. And if he, if he decided one day he wanted to come in and give the kid some, some pitching, you know, tips, then all of a sudden, that becomes a lesson. And that's not what this facility is built for. This facility is built for the gathering of teams to get better and not for end of, you know, you'll get better as a team, you'll get better as an individual. But when you start doing individual, say, I'm going to, I want to come in, I want to hit from 5:00 to 5:30. That's like me taking my daughter, Ally, over to Total Fitness and paying a hundred and, $400 a month, whatever I pay, for her to go over there and hit. She's paid, they, I pay them, I pay an instructor, they improve her hitting. And that's what you're doing when you're bringing in an individual, I feel like. I think this has to be more team-oriented than, than just a one-on-one. You're, you're talking about an 8,000 square foot facility, opening it up for one child. And I don't, I don't see the benefit of that.
But then are we talking about, getting back to what we began, most of this discussion about, is excluding kids that live in the city from a recreational activity?
I, I don't see how it is if you're, you're talking about one individual kid. I don't see that, I don't really see that ever happening anyway. I don't see a father wanting to come and, and, and hit. You just don't see that that often. I don't, don't see where that would, would ever come into play. And you were talking about opening it up through the whole, basically everyone. Well, when you, if you take East and you take West and you're looking at 20 teams at the East and five or six at the West, you're at 26 teams, you've got five or six, seven, eight softball teams, I'm not sure how many play in, actually play in the city, that are playing on their minimum amount of parks. And you go to the county and the county is playing on 20 parks. So there's not a problem for practice space for them. They all have, I mean, there's nine parks at, at Three Springs. They, they practice in different areas as well, Apron Park, even some out at Buchanan Park. So there's a lot of facilities for those kids where there's not so much for this. And when a kid chooses to play in the county, you might have a city kid from Bowling Green playing with 12 other kids from the county. Whereas if you've got a county kid that comes to the city, you've got one city. Whereas if you've got a county kid that comes to the city, you've got one city, one county kid playing with the city because his parent works in the city limits for whatever, for whatever reason. So now you're opening it up, do you bring in another twenty-plus teams from the South and another six, eight teams, whether they have in the North? Then you start bottlenecking what the facility's actually trying to be used for, for the kids of the city. Now, that city kid that's playing for the South or the North chose to go out of the city to play. Now, not trying to get into a whole lot of this, but this is not going to be an issue in another year. Because this is just the first one. We're going to build one in the South as well. That's our intent. We're, but we wanted to get this one off and running, and then we wanted to get together with the South League and the North League and see how we can best help them. But because Corey started at Caryacus, that's why we wanted to start here.
That seems like, and again, my thick headiness, but that seems like it's a direct contradiction to what we've just heard.
I don't, but that's what I was saying.
So it's not?
I don't see how it is because the one city kid you're bringing, if you've got ten kids that live in Rich Pond, they're not city kids, are they?
Oh, yes, I mean, no, I don't know where they live.
But I'm just saying, I'm saying they live in Rich Pond.
Their parent could be a teacher there, and they could live in the city.
But they're county. I mean, they're, but I'm just saying, they're county kids. So I don't know how you're going to determine who is going to benefit from this if you're opening it up to forty-six to fifty teams, and I don't know that the space is big enough to hold that many teams.
Can I just be a little...
Let me just throw this one comment in.
Okay, okay.
And the comment is that the city kid is also a county kid. We always, we sometimes lose sight of that, too. The city kid is always a county kid, living in the county of Warren.
Right, but they're still divided up by leagues.
Yes.
The county, do you ever practice at any of the county parks? The city park kids, the county ever come and practice your parks?
Well, Johnny, I think my...
They're divided up by that.
My first issue, when I first, and several others, is yet, again, is the exclusion of kids who want to have recreational activity in a public building. And I think I'm, Jay, am I hearing two different things? Or is this...
I think what he's making, this is why I asked earlier if he wanted to speak.
We can't hear you.
Microphone, no.
This is why I asked if he wanted to speak earlier because I'm right here in the middle. I want this to get built. I want to do the right things for the kids and the community. But I also know that there is, reality sets in here somewhere. Again, in speaking with some people today that set these schedules, these practice schedules, like he said, I really don't know that this is going to be a humongous issue as far as people dialing up the phone and they're dying to get in here to this facility. I know that there will be people that do want to get in the facility that are not a part of Bowling Green East Little League or Bowling Green West Little League. I do, I'm not naive enough to think that that's not going to happen.
Or older kids that we've not even talked about, that are still...
There are signs on our fields that say, that you all own, and I own, everybody here owns. What do they say, Brent, on Caryacus Park? What is it? They can't hear you.
Ten to thirteen years base for Little League Park.
Okay, that you have, you, you have on that field right now. I mean, we can take them down, we can vote to do that, that's fine. But facilities are built with certain activities in mind. And that Little League distance and that size of that practice facility are going to be made for baseball and purchased for kids that are going to play baseball that don't play in the major leagues, that don't play in a men's softball league. The materials are going to be for kids that are, I'll stretch it a little bit, not ten, but eight to thirteen years old.
And I said earlier, Jay, I don't think I have a problem with being specific about the use of the building.
I know, but I'm just speaking to the exclusive nature of who's going to practice where. The other thing that you're hearing him say, though, is he is making a statement that there is a promise, if we can get this done with your all's blessing, of course, that the same thing could be done in other areas. Again, Corey and Mr. Hart both find that Caryacus is where they played, so that's what they find. In talking to Paul Kilgus, who also pitched in the major leagues for many years, it's not just Caryacus. We used to play Little League baseball, before it was Little League baseball, at TC Cherry, Lampkin Park. I played at TC Cherry before I played at Lampkin Park, before there was Little League there. So Bowling Green East Little League, novel idea here, may not always be at Caryacus. So just because we build this facility at Caryacus does not mean that it's going to always house all the things that are there right now. But Corey, who played there, has a special thought about Caryacus of what could be done there and what happened there. But as far as exclusivity, we want kids to learn life lessons with Little League baseball. You know, I trust in God, I love my country, respect its laws, you know the deal, all the way down. I will play fair and I will strive to win. Those are the kinds of things that we're doing here. And I would really, I would be very disappointed if we don't go through the process to make sure that we do as many things right as we can possibly do with this. Because it is a gift, and it is an opportunity for those kids. I just, I would hate to lose sight of the prize that we can have for a few anecdotal things that might not be what happened on a, not only a day-to-day basis, but a month-to-month basis.
Just to follow up to what Bill, what he was asking, it's still a picture in my mind that those ten little kids walking down the street right here, we want to go out to Caryacus, Mom and Dad, and we just want to, we just want to play. What's that building over there? Well, you can't go in that building over there because that building has already been dedicated to East Little League. And Mama asked, well, isn't that a public park? Isn't that a city-owned building? Why is it locked up? Had the same question asked of me three weeks ago, why the Coomer Building down here on College Street was locked up? Why can't I go in there? What's the deal, Joe? The building's locked up. I don't know, let me call. Well, it was locked up because there were some special needs projects going on in that facility at that time, and we locked the facility. The key point, the key question was, why is my building locked up where I can't get in it? And it seems somewhere or another that this picture is only taking, and I can understand. There's two sides to every story. We're talking about a baseball in hand and a baseball being thrown. We're not talking about a building on city property in a city park that is not accessible but to an only few, period. That's all I got to say.
A lot's been discussed today, and thank you all for all of your time. I just want to sum up and let you know where I'm standing on this issue, for whatever it's worth. If this goes through, I'm in favor of giving the East Little League and West Little League priority. I'm in favor of giving our children that choose to play in Bowling Green Parks and Rec, they get priority. They've made that choice, and I'm thankful they chose the city of Bowling Green. So I would want East and West to get priority. If you have any camps where you charge a fee, I discussed this with Mr. Kilgus, I would like for those fees to go for scholarships, indoor utilities. Then for all other teams, possibly charge a rental fee. And possibly, based on what he said, have some open hours. And you're talking about Coomer Little, there's certain times, if my son wanted to go play basketball, he couldn't because teams are in there, Parks and Rec's teams are in there. I don't care how bad he wanted to play, he can't get in there. All the courts are full. But there are occasionally some open gym hours when the games aren't taking place. So I could see that possibly being here. But I thank you for this opportunity. Have no idea which way it's going to go up here, but that's where I stand on this and would like to see these things. And also, one other thing, I don't know sports, but if we could have somehow where it could be open for softball as well.
That would be...
Okay, then that's fine.
Yes.
That's where I stand.
Any comments or questions, issues? Jim, thank you for taking the time to make this proposal. Good information for us, if you'll give us time to sleep on it a little bit, and we'll get back with you about that through Brent. Thank you. I really appreciate the opportunity to talk with you and a good discussion.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. The other item on the agenda was something that we had talked about when a new set of legislation passed in this last session, which is an opportunity for cities who run nonpartisan elections to discontinue the practice of having a primary race to reduce the number of, essentially commissioners down to eight. I'll let Gene, if you don't mind, just give us a brief...
This will be a very short presentation. I don't think we'll go forty minutes or more for this one. As the mayor just said, Bowling Green has nonpartisan elections. Up until, continuing to the end of this year, by state law, as long as we had more than eight candidates for City Commission and more than two candidates for a mayor spot, the self-nominations, we were obligated, required by state law, to hold primaries in May before the election. As everybody's aware, make sure I get the right bill number, House Bill 331, that was adopted this year by Kentucky General Assembly, did away with the classifications of cities. Remember, we were always a second-class city, and particularly second-class cities always hated that terminology because it was almost like a second-class person, we were a second-class city. But this new legislation did away with that. Now it's basically two classifications of cities, Louisville and everybody else. And Lexington's just out there by itself. And we're now called, we will be effective January first, we'll be called home rule cities in Kentucky. I think the general idea at first was there's not going to be any change. Because anyone come in and make wholesale changes. I think KLC would hope over time that some distinctions between all the classes of cities, particularly on population, could be done away with. Because we've had some cities in the past, for example, that probably could be second-class cities but chose not to because they were able to keep the restaurant tax and some other stuff. So this was kind of intended to be able to do away with that thing and make all, particularly all cities of same class or size pretty equal. But one of the things that it did change, I'm not too sure everybody picked up on it real quickly, but KRS, oh, we've got the 240, A3A 047, make sure I don't miss it. That is the statute that deals with primary elections. Right now, fourth through sixth-class cities by ordinance can do away with primaries if they choose to. This new statute now comes in and says all home rule cities can now do away with the primary elections if they choose to. It still sets out in detail how you do it by ordinance. It still sets out all the things you've got to do with the same filing requirements. I've kind of drafted a draft ordinance we'd look at. There's really no hurry on this, to be honest with you. The statute's not effective until January first. We don't have elections next year. So really, the beginning point of this will almost be November of next year before it really becomes a reality. But the draft I gave you does confirm that our elections are nonpartisan. We just put that in because I hadn't seen place in our ordinance where we said we're nonpartisan, because I put that in. It does eliminate the primary election in May. It still says that you file papers, not earlier than the first Wednesday, after the first Monday, I like this language, in November and the year before the election. So for example, we have elections in 2016. You begin filing your papers in November of 2015 if you chose to do that early. But you can go all the way to the second Tuesday in August. And that's when the filing deadline will then end, and not in January like it is now. It'll go to the second Tuesday in August, no primary. So how many people, if we have five people run for mayor, five people will be on the ballot. If we have seven people file for City Commission or twelve people file for City Commission, all names will go on the ballot in November. So it's fairly short and simple change. This is entirely up to the City Commission, if this is something you want to look at. Like I said, there's no rush. But if somebody is interested, you know, let me know, I've got the ordinance drafted. But, you know, simple things, it just does away with the primary election. You know, policy reasons, this is probably more up to you guys decide, policy-wise, whether this is a good thing, a bad thing, for candidates and everybody else. But at least by now, state law, we have the same opportunity that fourth through sixth-class cities have always had.
So this is a decision we make locally.
Yes.
This does not have to be forwarded to any state government officer. We just post it and it becomes law.
You can do it in ordinance, you can do it by ordinance. You'll probably, obviously, we will notify the clerk's office, one kind clerk's office, to make sure that they are not surprised that we're not having primary elections. But no, there's no approval by anybody else, this is strictly a local decision.
And it would take effect January 2015, so the first election that year would be in November.
2016.
2000...
So we don't have any elections next year?
Yeah, 2016.
Yes.
I agree.
The reason, no, the reason we brought this up is to give people time to have comments on it. I don't believe we're calling for any action tonight. But some of the issues that you take, are taken into consideration is, you know, does it give the incumbents an advantage or does it not? I think that's a debatable presumption in that if, like this year, we had nine people running in the primary, but there were, what, fifty-six or fifty-eight people on the ballot, did you have an advantage when you're lost in that? You know, there are nine people running in District Five in the county, so you're lost in the shuffle. So I don't know that you gained anything by running in the primary. But some people think that being out there twice, it does. Other issues that have been brought to my attention, well, it gets rid of yard signs for at least one season and only put them out in the fall. But, you know, we're interested in hearing what the public has to say. If anybody else has any comments about it, we just want to bring it up and see if there's anything, yes, ma'am.
I have one question. I don't, now, the answer, has there ever been a time in the primary, it's just City Commissioners? And so we're paying that expense, or our taxpayers are paying the expense just to...
I'm not sure I can answer that question. I would be surprised if that was the only thing I'd think of.
Okay, so usually there's something else besides...
There's usually something else.
Okay, besides commission, okay.
And this is, this would affect mayor and commissioners?
Yes.
Yes, it would do.
I'm sorry, yeah, it would affect both.
I'm sorry.
I think you're right in the fact that it's debatable whether it would assist or help incumbents. However, and someone mentioned to me last night something that, along those same lines. And actually, if you filed in November, you could campaign. You can campaign anytime you want to. So you can put your name out there, you can do whatever you want to do. It just seems like this may get more people involved. And I'm being a little facetious, but if we can get rid of yard signs for a few more months, that may be the best reason in the world to vote for it.
And it may be. You said, get people involved. People may think, well, it costs so much to run, and I have to do it twice in the year. That may encourage other people to file if they may have to run one time.
That was the point that gentlemen was talking to me about last night, actually.
But then again, it does get people's names out. Any other comments or thoughts about it?
I would like to hear what some people have to say, although I haven't totally made up my mind. But I think I'm leaning toward doing away with the primary. Haven't totally made up my mind, but that's where I'm at right now.
To go back and respond to Commissioner Hill's question about how many primaries, I think in the last ten elections, there might have only been three primaries that the City Commission was involved in.
Okay.
Now, this year, actually, we had nine candidates.
I was trying to think when the last time we had more than nine. It seems like an awful lot of trouble to go to, to just knock one or two people off the list of eight to choose from.
We've had, are you talking about the number we've had in any past election? There has been, that I can think of, we've had twelve, thirteen, maybe fourteen.
Yes, ma'am.
So that brings up a point. Could we change this? We'd have a primary if we have twelve candidates or more, or does it have to be more than?
I think it's one or the other.
Is it all or nothing?
I don't know if you have it or you don't.
Good question. There's one other thing concerning... There's one, one other thing to consider in this is that it moves the filing deadline from when everybody else stops, which is the...
January 3rd.
Third, third Tuesday in January or something like that, to the middle of August. So if somebody was really ambitious and lost in a primary election in a partisan race and said, I still want to be in political office, then he can turn around and file in, in August. So there's a lot of things to think about in it. So again, if you don't mind giving us your input and your thoughts about it, you have all our email addresses on the city's website. We appreciate it. That's the last item that we had on here. Mr. DeFoe, do you have anything else?
No, I don't.
I have one other, just a follow-up to our first session. I had asked about maybe getting a draft schedule request, and I think Dr. Wallace was, was okay with that. And I would like to add to that, I'd like to see some type of proposed city budget. Again, it's hard to pass on something if you didn't, don't know what the dollars might be. Brent?
You know, we'd welcome the opportunity to sit down at East Little League and, I guess, develop the proposal a little bit more if that's, if that's the request.
It would give us some idea, there might be less confusion that way.
Sure. That's the director, we'll, we'll take that.
I think we clarified the issue of, is it first come, first served? Or, that was helpful. Because I didn't hear a clear answer to that. Or was Brent supposed to figure that out somehow in the scheduling process?
I thought those sessions were valuable. We got rid of some misinformation, and so I thought it was all valuable, so.
All right, anything else? We'll retire and come back at 7 o'clock for our ready-to-work session. Thank you, gentlemen.
We're going to have a second session.